Good afternoon and welcome to the January 6, 2025 Spalding County Board of Commissioners Work Session. The time is 3:00 PM. We would ask that you please silence your cellphones and all other electronic devices. And just as a reminder, this is a work session, so there will be no voting during this session. At this time, I'd ask Commissioner Watts to offer the invocation, followed by Commissioner Bolden to lead us in the pledge the flag. And I'd also like to welcome Commissioner Watts for his first session to be with us, and we're excited about you being here.
Yes, sir. Let us pray. In the powerful name of Jesus, Lord, we just thank you. Lord, we thank you for who you are. And right now, we just ask that you just let us decrease as you increase, Lord, and let us make the right decisions that we need to do for this board. We thank you, we honor you, and it is in your powerful name your people have prayed. Amen, amen, and amen.
If we please go men pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number one, discuss the details and costs associated with Commissioner Retirement Program through ACCG. At this time, we have Director Miles Neville will share more on this topic.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello? Can you hear me? I don't think this is working, but I have a pretty big mouth, so. Let me know if you can't hear me.
Excuse me, wanted to make sure that it worked enough. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you all wanted me to wait.
Oh, no.
Because you didn't want me to holler at you.
Nope. Holler is okay at us.
Okay, so I was asked to come back around regarding potential Commissioner retirement. This was discussed last year. And so I was asked to bring it back up again. There was a legal reason in that the state would not, state law would not allow us at that time to implement a retirement for the commissioners. But we're in a position now where we can do that until the window closes. So I just wanted to come back around and bring that up again. As Commissioner Watts, you don't know this, so I don't think you do. The City of Griffin Board of Commissioners has a Commissioner Retirement Plan. They've had it in place for maybe eight years, maybe even longer. Certainly when I was there, it got put into place when I was working there. We obviously do not have a plan, and I was asked to look into that. I believe most city and county governments in our area have one. Would you agree with Dr. Ledbetter?
I do.
Okay. So this was something we wanted to bring back up again and talk about. We are prepared to do this from a procedural standpoint. Now, whether we're prepared to do this from a fiscal standpoint, I don't know. It's not that expensive, but it could get expensive depending on what you want me to do. So where would you like me to start with this?
At the beginning.
At the beginning, okay. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. So last year, the commissioners asked me to look into it. And this is good for you to learn as well real quickly. And so we did. And we had the ACCG Retirement Services do a study, an actuarial study, which they did. The study was to look at mirroring what the City of Griffin does for their retirement, which is basically for a Commissioner Retirement would be $25 a month for every year they are aboard of, on the commission, with a minimum of five years of service. I'm not sure why we did five years of service when I was there because it's four years per term, but they did five years. And so I looked at the same except $25 for every year of service for eight years of service. So you'd have to be here, Commissioner, two years, two terms to be vested in the plan itself. And that was what we had really talked about. That was the option that we were most interested in doing. The cost to it is not that expensive, but it's still a cost. The cost would actually go down now because Commissioner Johnson is no longer here, so her service doesn't count toward the actuarial study anymore. They'd have to do a new study without her in it, but adding Commissioner Watts. But since he has zero time in, that would lower the amount that we would have to pay for the recommended amount for the retirement plan. At the time, the retirement, they were recommending that it would be a minimum of $13,300 a year to fund the plan. At a maximum, their recommended amount would be $16,700. Now, that is with Commissioner Johnson. Without her, that number changes and actually would go down. We have learned something new recently, and this is kind of a reason to bring, Dr. Ledbetter and I wanted to bring it back up, is because we understand the city is now looking at raising that $25 to between $50 and $100. And they'll have to do an actuarial study, if they haven't already, determine the cost, and decide whether or not they want to do that. That's obviously on them and not on us. But at this point, I guess my question is to you, or question to you is, what is our appetite for this? And where do we want, where do you want? Or nowhere.
No, I think right now, what we really want you to do is just, now that you've given us the information, us time to have time to think through it and say, all right, what do we want to do? How do we feel about it? We know what we did last year. We've changed one commissioner out, and two were reelected. So let's, let us think about it, and we'll come back with a decision later on direction we want you to go, especially as we get ready to do the budget. This is a budget issue for us, and whether we're put it in the budget or not, put it in the budget this year.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Public Works Director TJ Mberger will speak on the next three agenda items, presentation on the software Confirm and Asset Essentials. Director?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Pleasure to be here this afternoon. Before we get started with this presentation, I need to thank some folks that were involved, specifically Randy King, who's been our project manager on this for over a year, Mickey Rios in our office, Joseph Johnson with the Water Authority, his engineering staff, Chris Reagan over in GIS, and Parker and Matthew, they've been very substantial in assisting us in this exciting software presentation that we'll be providing. Okay, a little back history on our software that we use currently inside of Public Works, parks, buildings. We originally started with Facility Dude back about 15 years ago. At that time, we brought in a software program that was mainly for buildings and grounds. Over the last five or so years after we purchased that, we actually assisted Facility Dude into creating some software that would be more conducive to Public Works usage. And then we worked with them, worked on their client board, worked with them nationally to show ways that their software could be used on the outside, as for parks maintenance and for Public Works. They were actually purchased by a company called Dude Solutions. That software that we assisted them with became Asset Essentials. Asset Essentials is the software we've been using in Public Works now for about eight years. Then, a couple of years back, they, a company called Brightly actually purchased Facility Dude. And then about a year and a half ago, Siemens purchased Brightly. As they moved along with Asset Essentials, it was becoming farther away from what we could use inside of the public works scope and the outside. We originally tried to get the Water Authority on it, but the way that Asset Essentials was set up was more for buildings and not what we call vertical. So vertical would be streets and parks and acreages. Then, what we found out, I'll show you in the next slide, is, is when Siemens bought Brightly, they bought them because Siemens has a product called Confirm, which is a public works software product, and that is the largest public works software in the world, but not in America. There we go. So in 2023, myself and Joseph Johnson with the Water Authority, we knew that with the implementation of GIS and the county taking over GIS, and then in reference to wanting to produce better data, dashboards, and being able to make better decisions, we knew that we've outgrown our software and we needed to head into a different direction that would be able to integrate all of those items. So we had the need in several departments, and then it also included construction and maintenance and all of the county buildings. We did need a better way to track our assets. When we're tracking our assets, we become more efficient and we can present more data for the commissioners to make long-term decisions. We knew GIS was coming aboard and that we wanted to take advantage of all of the opportunities that that offered us. And then we did want to tie in the Water Authority because the products that we currently did not have, didn't work well with their inventories and their assets. So we began a process about a year and a half ago, began in 2023, myself and Mr. Johnson went ahead and we started exploring what was available in the software world for Public Works, water, and building. Typically, what we found was that there was eight or 10 major players that are used throughout the country, and we started to demo those software products. We were specifically wanting to make sure that we had a product that would take care of all of our needs. So this included roads, signs, sidewalks, county facilities, stormwater, daily works crews, and then, of course, the Water Authority. We did, if I have my little pointer here, we did, after all the demos, we resolved a product called Cartograph, which features the needs best for the county. So we started to work on a way that we could come to you to fund that. With all software, and I know you've been through this recently with Tyler, it's very expensive. So there's not only an initial cost, there's a very high annual cost. This was not going to be any different. The initial cost was going to be about a quarter of a million dollars, and then we anticipated about $125,000 a year in our annual cost to begin with. As we were thinking about that, I got a phone call from Siemens, and Siemens wanted to talk to us. They knew our history with Facility Dude and Brightly, Brightly. They knew our history and being able to be very proactive and to be able to assist with the development of software. So they started talking to us about possibly allowing us to be, to roll out Confirm for one of their test departments or test counties inside the United States. Myself and my team and Joseph's team had several interviews with Siemens, and in the outcome, they elected to have Spalding County be one of the two public works departments in the United States to actually roll out the new Confirm software at essentially no cost.
Wow.
So what is the new capabilities that we were looking for and will have with our new software? We'll be re-implementing Asset Essentials. So Asset Essentials has become very strong in the building maintenance world. We are actually clearing out, we're saving all of our data, but we're starting over fresh. We're actually adding all of the county's buildings, so all the construction maintenance will come in. This will be the very first time that all county facilities will be inside of a software program. So that'll be Asset Essentials. Then, we'll have the new buildout of Confirm. That'll give us our mobile capabilities in the field for Public Works, Parks, Stormwater, and the Water Authority. That'll tie in our new GIS system. And then it also gave us new capabilities at our emergency operations centers. We'll be able to actually work off of a live map so we could see what our incident looks like, see what roads are closed, what we need to do. And then, there's also, now that you have all this data, there's things that these softwares will do, but there is a partner software that Brightly has that's called Capital Predictor. Capital Predictor will take all of the data, and it can analyze and see where we stand, where we compare against other departments basically throughout the world. What is our efficiency rate? When do we need to replace HVAC systems? When do we need to replace roads? How much does that cost? The Board of Commissioners can set budgets two years, three years in advance. We can see what that will address as far as maintaining our assets. So this is just a brief glimpse of what Asset Essentials will do. This will be the new program that's inside all of our buildings. So when we look at efficiencies, say like an HVAC system, when is a good time to replace that? When does it cost us more than it should? So all of our inventory as far as buildings, and this is what we call horizontal, what is actually being added into Asset Essentials and both construction and maintenance and parks, parks maintenance, parks construction, we'll be using Asset Essentials. This gives you a little glimpse of some of the dashboard information that we could glean from that as well. Confirm will be the new vertical software, so Public Works, Stormwater, Water Authority, and then the acreage side of parks. So the fields and parking lots, et cetera. This will give us the new ability to streamline our infrastructure workflows. It'll allow our supervisors to program work on a daily and weekly basis. It'll integrate in the ELC. It'll automatically integrate into our GIS. So when our staff is out there and they're working on a stormwater outlet, first of all, of course, we can see if it's on the system already in GIS, but if it's not, they'll do the work, they'll register it inside the system. And then, a couple days later, our GIS department with the Water Authority, they'll go ahead and then update GIS. So we'll be updating our internal software for our data and our GIS system, and they'll be working back and forth together. Capital Predictor will be running in the background. We will not start this until next fiscal year because we want to get enough data. So this will be FY 20, FY 26, FY 27. It'll run in the background for all of the data that's going in, both horizontal and vertical, and then we'll be able to start providing data to you as far as efficiencies, replacement schedules. We can do it all the way down to curb and gutter. We can do that for elevators, HVAC. So we'll have unlimited capabilities as far as data. All right. So this is always the main, the main thing, the cost. So I did this in three separate components here, and then I've got a second page that looks even better. So currently, in the Asset Essentials world, we were paying $32,000. We actually, on that particular software, we went ahead and negotiated where we get the new Asset Essentials, and we started from scratch, full implementation, and it's going to be $10,000 a year for the next four years. If we go over to Confirm, we'll see that our first year, and we typically would have thought this is about $125,000 a year. Our first year is going to be zero, and then a year's two and four is going to be $24,000. You'll see that I did put the savings down at the bottom for each of these products over just the four-year period. Capital Predictor for the first two years will actually be zero when we turn it on, and then you can see our amounts there, 16 and 17. Once again, we have a substantial savings over that four-year period. So when I break it down to actual numbers, for the first 2.5 years or so, the cost is going to be less than what we are currently paying now.
Wow.
Now, if we look at the overall four years, if I project this up to FY 28, you can see our savings here. And if we add in what the implementation savings was, so this is the hard dollars that you have to pay to start the system. We got that at no cost. So over the next four years, we'll have the most up-to-date software, the leading software that's throughout the world, and we're saving almost a million dollars. Will entertain any questions?
Go back that slide. Make sure.
Sure.
All right. It's going to cost us, how much per year? What are we going to pay?
So year one is $10,000. Year two is going to be $34,000. So that's what we're doing right now, essentially. And then year four, year three and four is $51,000. So we're just a little bit ahead of what we have now with just a single product. And then, so for $51,000, that's what our annual cost is going to be for all three of these products.
This sounds like a pretty damn good thing.
Yes, sir.
Good pat on the back for you, TJ, on being able to pull all this together and talk to Siemens and do all that stuff to be able to get this and us beta testing and everything else. So this is, when you consider inflation in two years out, we're going to be paying less money than we would if we just continued on.
That's correct, yes, sir. And back to TJ's point, kudos to TJ, his team, and to Joseph Johnson and the Water Authority. They did a great job at negotiating with Siemens to get us in a position where we would be a test county for the United States. Siemens is a very large organization, and it's, it's kudos that we got selected one of two in the USA.
All right. Say again, TJ, year one, how much?
$10,000.
I'm sorry, I was looking and not paying, not writing. Year one. All right, year two?
It'll be $34,000.
Four to?
Year three and four is $51,000.
Okay.
And the $32,000 a year was already budgeted, so this is a very small savings, but it's a savings. Every dollar counts. Some of the parts make the whole.
Yes. And we have a long-range plan.
We do.
Which is a good thing. All right. Any comments from the commissioners? All right. Thank you, TJ.
Yes, sir.
That's a good news story. Your first item is done.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Presentation of Department Engineering current work list, including projected savings?
Yes, sir. So this is, as you're familiar, we spent about a year searching for an in-house engineer. It turned out to be a very exhaustive search. We were looking for, and we knew we couldn't afford what they call PE, which is a certified engineer. We were looking for someone who came out of college just a couple of years, maybe had some work experience, and was going to be able to assist us with projects. What we're finding now, especially in the public work sector, is that we are covered up with mandates, mandates for regulation, mandates for ways that we have to do things, even, you know, like signs, MUTCD guidelines, GDOT guidelines, federal highway guidelines. And then, we also had expected that this individual could assist us inside of the park system as well. Can we eliminate our engineering costs? No, we can't do that, but I can save a tremendous amount of money by allowing our in-house engineer to provide us with information that's very factual and is 100% based on the regulations and manuals and guidelines that are out there. So what I wanted to do was show you an example of how we can professionally step up and provide a better product to our citizens and yet save some really good dollars in the long run. What I'm going to do is, we were very, very fortunate to find Mohammed. He was a graduate a couple of years ago, a Kennesaw State University, has a civil engineering degree, and he had about a year and a half of GDOT experience before coming to us. We're going to give you an example of a current project that he just completed. He'll take you through the steps that are required through our mandates and our regulations so that we were able to actually address a specific safety concern that our citizens had on High Falls Road. And I estimate the savings here by doing it in-house compared to sending it out to a firm of just on this one project alone, about $5,000. Currently, Mohammed's working on about 12 projects. So the savings is going to multiply itself as we move forward, as he gets more comfortable with the county. It's very, very exciting to be able to address solutions to, to problems that the citizens bring to us. So I'm going to introduce Mohammed. I'm going to have him go through this presentation, and he'll show you step by step how he handled this particular safety concern.
Hey, everyone. Mohammed, the Public Works Engineer. Probably have heard about me. First time seeing me. I'm happy to be here. Thank you for having me. Going to be going over one of the projects, safety enhancement projects that we have completed on High Falls.
Can you all hear him in the back? Pull the microphone or raise.
Yeah, I'm going to be taking you over, going over one of the safety enhancement projects that we have completed recently on High Falls Road. So the site location is on High Falls. You can see on the bottom map, the griffin highlighted. The original request came from one of the citizens. They said there's a lot of vehicles speed up, one collision incident happened on one of the driveways, very low visibility, lack of signage and guiding signs, traffic control devices, anything. We don't have any street lights there. So with speeding trends, it's very, it's considered it's, it's very, um, it's considered a safety concern, high safety concern on that place. We went ahead and collected some of the information for that location. Um, we covered about fifteen foot, uh, fifteen feet of the, um, site that we have enhanced. Uh, High Falls Road is classified as rural major collector. It's fifty miles per hour. Two lanes going east and westbound. And it serves as a main connection to Highway sixteen as you move westward. Uh, it's also a major access to Rock Springs School and Church. So we originally went there to the site. We looked at it. We collected some of the observations that we have seen. Uh, one of the first things that we have noticed is we do have a really bad side distance there. As you're approaching both curves, uh, you can barely see the vehicles coming from the other, uh, direction. So that was, uh, one of the first things. Uh, we had a lot of dense trees, uh, which affect this topic side distance as well. Uh, we have noticed a lot of, uh, vehicles speeding there. And, uh, of course, one of the most important things that we have seen that there is no any guiding sign that is telling people there's a curve ahead. You have to have an advisory speed, or you have to drive within, um, a speed limit, uh, through the curve. We took these, uh, observations. We went to the, personally went to the office, uh, did some calculations based on the ASHTO manual. And, uh, I have, uh, find some of the features of the curve. We initially came for the first curve, which is located at the bottom right. Uh, but we went beyond and noticed that there's a second curve that needs to be addressed as well, uh, since it has the same problems. Uh, on the right, you can see some of the calculations that we have done. Uh, we found the degree of curvature and other features of the, uh, curves. Then we went ahead and collected other information to know what's going on exactly there. Uh, we know that the road is classified as a major collector. It's rural, uh, gets about four thousand vehicles daily. Uh, on the left, you can see the graph, um, showing the, um, volume of vehicles. We've got the peak hours at six AM, six PM, which is seven P, seven AM, six PM. That, that range is, uh, when people are leaving to work, school, and when they get off work as well. Uh, it's a considerable amount of traffic, uh, relatives, relatively speaking to, uh, other roads on the, in the county. Here you can see, uh, the, uh, speeding, uh, graphs. Most drivers adhere to the speed limit, but unfortunately you can see in the shaded, uh, color in the graph, um, there is a frequent, um, and, you know, very, very common speeding trends uh, at various times of the day, and you can imagine with no signs, no lighting, uh, no advisory speed, this could be really dangerous. So, uh, we crafted the plan, uh, after we analyzed the, the data that we have collected, um, and decided to do several things. I went over it with my, uh, supervisor TJ. Uh, he liked it, and we started the implementation. We first started with, uh, clearing the, uh, trees to get the maximum side distance that we could attain there, uh, and it worked really well. And that gave up, gave us an idea of how is think, things are looking and what is next to be done. Um, we went ahead and placed some of the signs, uh, and advisory speeds and, uh, guiding, um, traffic control devices based on ASHTO, excuse me, MUTCD, FHWA, and other, um, um, commonly used and best-practiced, uh, manuals, engineering manuals. As you can see on the bottom right, uh, we have implemented curve ahead signs with advisory speed of twenty mi, twenty-five miles per hour. We have also implemented curve ahead on the other side for thirty miles per hour. Uh, we, um, placed, uh, reduced speed ahead because you don't want to tell the tri, the drivers that there's speed reduced ahead. They don't want to get to the curve and see that there's a curve ahead within fifty foot, and they don't have enough time to stop. Uh, we have placed chevrons, which are really helpful at night. They're reflective. They got the drivers through the curve, tell them that there's, there's a curve coming, and you don't, don't keep going that way, or, you know, have to follow the pattern that you, you're seeing. Uh, we finished it up with RPMs, which are highly reflective. Uh, they, they seem that they emit lights at night, but they don't, uh, they could think about them. They kind of draw the path of the curve for the driver to tell them that you have to be moving that way. Um, here's a picture of the after. Uh, it's not really clear because it's daylight, but if you drive through the, the, the curve, you'll be able to see the Chevron signs, the RPMs placed, uh, the curve ahead sign with advisory speed. The actual speed is fifty miles, but when you go through the first curve, you have to drive twenty-five miles per hour. Second one, thirty miles per hour, which was not there. And people used to keep going on the fifteen, sometimes even over, just by observation when we went on the side. Um, good thing when we're placing the final stage of it, uh, the RPMs, we had citizens come out. They came to us, thanked us, and they say they have really been seeing, uh, change in the driver's behavior. They're being slowing down. The curve is more visible, feels more safe. And, uh, we're glad to hear that because we did all of that work to hear that. Um, here's another picture, and I have video at night of it. Um, Chris, can you play that? As you approach it, you see the reduced speed ahead, and then you get to the curve ahead sign with advisory speed that you have to slow down. Then you start sort of seeing the chevrons guiding you through the, the curve with the RPMs placed, uh, in the center line. Uh, and basically it takes you to the end of the curve when other one gets, uh, straight, it's not curving anymore. Uh, we covered about fifteen, hundred feet, a little bit over quarter mile, uh, of visibility, and it's, it's ten times safer now. Hey, and, uh, this is the list of the other projects that I'm currently working on as well, managing or, uh, involved in somehow. Um, the TJ, uh, of course gets an overlook of that, always gets update, weekly updates of what's going on, um, on each project. These are the projects in motion. We got other projects as well that are still in the planning discussion phase. As soon as they get into the motion process or in progress, they could, uh, be added on that list, and, uh, the progress will be shared weekly. And that concludes what we have done on High Falls.
Go back to that slide in progress. I'm sorry, I was a little slow.
Sure, yeah.
Making sure everybody had time to look at it.
Yeah, sure, take a moment. Let me know if you have any questions. I'll be happy to answer them.
I do have a question.
Yes.
When, when did we talk about, what courthouse parking lot are we talking about expanding?
Uh, this is, uh, a courthouse, uh, project is delegated to Whitley Engineering. And, uh, we're still waiting on it.
Dedicated to what you were talking about that way.
Yeah, I'm saying it's, it's delegated to Whitley Engineering, which is a local firm. And, uh, we have been waiting on, uh, their update. Uh, we hear that they're going to get us an update after Christmas. We're still waiting on it.
The judges at the courthouse, Ms. Grant asked if we would consider, uh, looking at how much it would cost to provide them with secure parking. Uh, it is only a study at this point. It is not moving forward until we have all of the particulars, and we bring that back to you for consideration.
So when we say, okay, I know it was late. You, he is...
The engineer for Public Works.
Public Works, okay. So, um, when we say that these things are in progress, are we saying that we're paying someone to do this, or this is something they're doing in-house?
Uh, so for the, yeah, for, for the study over at the courthouse, uh, there is a very small TOF for Whitley to take a look at that. So we are expending a little bit of money, not a lot.
Okay, but where are we expanding it from?
From the construction, uh, budget for the courthouse.
Hmm, okay, I'm lost because I did not know that there was, I know there's an M and O for the courthouse, but I didn't know that there was a construction budget.
Yes, ma'am, it's a part of that M and O.
Okay, so, uh, I'll just have to go back and look at the budget because I wasn't aware. When you say it's a little bit, I don't, I don't know if we have three hundred thousand dollars in constructions funds for them, or we got twenty thousand dollars in construction funds for them.
I, I don't know what the total amount is for the courthouse as far as their M and O is concerned, but there is money set aside for maintenance, construction, uh, for items that may break or may need to be reviewed or looked at or updated, uh, based on the age of the courthouse. Uh, but the judges are asking us to consider providing them with a secure parking area after the incident from last summer. The shooting.
Okay, so we're not worried about the people getting shot?
We're worried about the people.
Okay, so, so that means everybody who comes to court can go into a secure parking space. So, so, yeah, I have a concern with that because it wasn't a judge or an attorney that got shot. It was a person who was a client coming out. And from that, judges have determined that they are at higher risk than the people that are in the building. Am, am I y'all looking at me like you're in a headlight?
I'm, I'm, I'm with you.
So, so understand, I hear what you're asking, but I think the picture is bigger than that. It should be about security, period, not about security for the judges.
Yes, ma'am.
Or security for the staff. So I'll be interested to hear what that comes back looking like.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, my other question was, on the Chulie, uh, Yarborough Mill Road, Chulie Bridge, anything that happens to, happens to do with road, Apple to Amelia Road, are those funds coming out of, um, transportation money? Where are the funds to, to do the things that we talked about? The pipes and driveways have been upgraded. Is that something that we did, or people had to pay for that?
Those are coming out of our, I'm sorry, coming out of our road improvement fund.
Okay, so, but don't we usually charge people for driveway pipes?
We no longer sell driveway pipes, ma'am.
Okay, so how are they paying for this? Because if anyone comes and has to do a driveway, they have to get a pipe. So you're saying now they have to buy it?
These are specific construction projects, um, not, there, some of them are individual driveways. However, they're related to the actual infrastructure of the road itself. And then some of these are cross drains which actually go underneath our road. So these are, so for instance, Yarborough Mill Road, we don't have large enough diameter driveway pipes for a certain section of the road. We're not able to handle all the water. The water's coming onto our road. So in those situations, that would be handled through us, through the road improvement fund. Uh, if it's a typical driveway installation, that is the responsibility of the landowner.
Okay, I, I, I guess when I see on here the pipes and driveways have been upgraded at the intended addresses on the project plan to date, I, I would like to know what, what that is, because it sounds very much like a gratuity is happening.
It's, uh, when we went to the site, we do our inspection based on, um, how is the, uh, the terrains are looking, how is, uh, the, the storm intensity looking? And if there's any, uh, ditch or any driveway that is affecting our road, then we have to replace it, uh, to make sure that the drainage system is functioning, uh, as we want, so it doesn't cause any more problems on the road, and we don't have to pay extra for it and keep the maintenance, um, being spent on, on those specific sections.
So is this your district? Okay, so Yarborough Mill Road is a dirt road, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So while we're doing this work, are we working out of the fact that the right of way should have been expanded? Because I know we're not putting in infrastructure on a dirt road that we will have to come back later if they want to pave and ask them for a right of way.
Correct, so first of all, this is part of a direct result in our test of the chip and seal project. And yes, the ditch line is our right of way. So if you were to pave this road, you would need eighty-foot of right of way. So, uh, most of Yarborough Mill Road is fifteen to twenty feet wide, period.
So do you see my concern with that? Be, you see my concern with that is because we're providing this ability for the road to runoff, but what we really know is that this is a dirt road, and if it ever gets any improvement, it's going to be widened, which mean our wa, our, our right of way is going to be further. So we're going to have to reinvest that money because we'll have to move the drainage if the road spreads.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm just trying to figure out, did we think that far ahead? Because clearly at some point, these roads are going to have to have some surfacing done to them.
So I would think Yarborough Mill Road is about a six to eight million dollar project if we were to pave that.
Not interested in that. I'm talking about the planning aspect of it.
I understand.
Be, have it, I don't want it to be distorted. It could cost twenty million dollars. But I know we can't do any work until there is a plan. And so if the plan does not show that we need to acquire some right of way before we start putting carrying taxpayer infrastructure in the ground, I have a concern with that.
Yes, ma'am. In this particular situation, the road is washing away. So I can't, I have to maintain the safety of the dirt road. That's why these particular pipes are being replaced in conjunction with the entire chip and seal project, and to make sure that the road does not wash away. They're inside of our right of way, and I don't anticipate Yarborough Mill Road being paved. You know, that's up to you. You could obviously fund that next year, but I don't see that in any time in the foreseeable future, so I need to make sure the road doesn't wash away. Uh, if the road is going to be paved, all of the infrastructure inside of that eighty-foot right of way, including utilities, is going to have to be replaced.
Well, that depends on what an engineer would talk about, what it looks like on one side and the other.
So currently, all of the utilities on all dirt roads would be within that eighty foot, because it's just right next to the ditch. Actually, some of it... Yes, ma'am. Unless it's, we have, uh, Covington Road has the eighty-foot right of way. Pine View has the eighty-foot right of way. And there may be one more. Kevin can jump in. Those are the only two that the right of way has been acquired. That was done several years ago from the county. So there's a lot of dirt roads that actually have utilities actually under our road. Like AT&amp;Ts, most of that's under our roads.
So, but we obviously gave them permission to do that.
Oh, ma'am.
Okay. We're, we're going in a circle here.
We, we don't give, uh, the utilities permission to do that, like AT&amp;T or Georgia Power. Uh, they automatically work within their right of way, so they will go make acquisition. And typically for a dirt road, it is right on the edge of the road. Uh, so at some point, we're all going to need to be, um, moving into that eighty-foot right of way area.
That is my point. I hear you're saying we need to fix it because this is a Band-Aid?
Right, re- remember, that's one of the reasons why the Board of Commissioners is very adamant about if a dirt road, if the property owners on a dirt road wish to have their properties, um, paved, then they give up the easement. We are not required to purchase that easement, which would increase the amount of money that we would be required to pay, uh...
In order to get the property.
Right, in order to get that property. Uh, this i- is not just a Band-Aid. It is, uh, we, we really are looking to put together a strategic plan for how we bring all of our dirt roads into, uh, a, a position where we are within an eighty-foot right of way. But I think we're a long ways from having that strategic plan put in place. But I, I do appreciate it. I think you're exactly right. That's something that we should be working on.
I, I just think that when we start looking at, at projects, we, we need to project not just this money, but what will fix it. Because if it's, if it's a dirt road, see, I don't think that a dirt road that has, um, what'd you call that stuff?
Chip and seal.
Yeah. It's either chip and seal, or it's dirt. Because if it's got chip and seal on it, there should be no dirt flying, right? So, yeah, I think the words are important. It's not a dirt road anymore. It's a road that we have improved, which means that we had to widen it some.
No, actually, we did not widen.
No.
We didn't widen any of the roads that we chip and sealed. That's correct. We, uh, no, we've done...
I went on Amelia Road. It looked like that road had been widened.
Oh, ma'am. Uh, we don't widen roads.
I mean, the ditch had been moved further out. Okay. Alright, I'm good TJ.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, anything else on, uh, on the engineering? Alright, let's go on to, uh, presentation on the remaining requested Public Works and Parks items on the supplemental list. Director Amburger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, yes, this is the remaining items that were in the approved supplemental list. Uh, first of all, I want to give an update on our roll-off trucks. Um, I have yet to find a truck, so what I was thinking I was going to do is we'll search for one truck in this fiscal year. Um, we would replace, actually, as you know, you approved to, uh, surplus three of the five. Uh, you were familiar with the problems we're having with the Peterbilt. So, uh, this is what I hope to plan to do is actually replace... what I hope to plan to do is actually replace the Peterbilt only in this fiscal year, be able to sell that, which I think I can get a minimum of fifty thousand dollars for. And that will help us in this particular year. I could have one, so that'll give us two good working units, and then we could discuss, uh, replacement of the second one in fiscal year twenty-six in the next budget process.
What's the end dollar amount that you're, that is gonna be required?
So, um, inside of what you approved was two sixty. Feel confident I could probably find one between two forty, two fifty, and then we have the surplus money. So there's a good chance I can have this decently below two hundred thousand. And it was originally, you had approved five sixty for me, so I'll take the other half and discuss that in FY twenty-six budget. That'll give us two, um, very, very reliable units, uh, so that we could keep moving forward.
Okay.
Just as an, as an update. All right, so these are the items that remain in the supplemental that are either related to, uh, Public Works or Parks. Uh, there are several items here. Uh, don't think I could go over, I go over them in a couple slides. I did place some pictures here of some particular items for, um, possibly may have questions. Uh, the flail mower is what you purchased about a year and a half ago, the two of those flare mowers, this would give us, our third cutting crew would have, have the flail mower. Uh, we started testing out ZTRs on the Public Works grass crews over a year ago. That's gone extremely well. Uh, interesting, we did purchase this Cub mower here, that yellow one in Parks. It's actually a slope mower, it's a slope ZTR. After they received it, I actually had it go out with one of our flail mower crews, had them test it for a few days, and then I actually got on it for a half a day. And, uh, this particular machine is, it's a game changer for us. We go ahead and have that and the flail mower, it's a ZTR, but it's a slope ZTR. It has six wheels, um, I could not make it unstable. Uh, we were able, I was able to keep up, um, you know, with the crew. I think we'll definitely increase our speed. Uh, one thing that we've seen this year with the way that we are now doing the cutting crews based on the data, based on the flail mower, based on the ZTRs being added, our efficiency level has, uh, increased dramatically. We almost got four rotations in the cut this year, which is pretty good. Typically, we'll do two or three, so we've almost doubled. Um, I've had maybe two or three complaints the whole cutting season, which is pretty unheard of, um, that we've experienced in the past. Good thing here is a pole barn.
TJ.
Yes, I'm sorry.
What is the circumference of the, the yellow mower?
Uh, cutting width? It's, it's almost seven feet.
Okay, and then the flail motor?
The flail mower, the ones we have now are fourteen. Uh, we're gonna, we need to get them a little bit smaller, so the wing part, I'm gonna cut in half and try to be at around that eleven foot mark. Uh, we've.
I don't know what that means, what you just said.
So we're gonna go from fourteen to eleven. Um, they have actually a flail mowers, if you'll, they actually have a flail mower directly behind the tractor, and then to the right there, you'll see what we call a wing, that's a second flail that actually moves up and down, uh, as they move past obstacles. Uh, what we found out with the ones we bought two years ago is that's a little bit too long. Unlike a lot of other DOTs, we do have a fair amount of mailboxes, that type of thing. So we saw that we were stressing some of the components as we were moving it up and down. We've worked directly with Alamo.
Oh, just because it's too long, so it's.
Yeah, we're getting a little bounce in air, we've worked with our Ford dealer, we've worked with Alamo, we have a really good plan for that, and they make a little bit of a smaller one, so I'll go with the smaller one this year. Uh, so I don't think we're gonna have those problems.
So what, where are we, where are we cutting grass with the flail mower?
Uh, right of ways.
No.
So on the side of the road.
What, what are, what are we cutting? I saw somewhere where you had something about the industrial park, what are we cutting at the industrial park?
We don't cut at the industrial park at all anymore, do we? We have not cut industrial park in.
If you, if, if we had the whole list, it says that, that one of these cutters is used for the industrial park and for city park.
Well, we have, that's Green Valley Park. So Green Valley Park is our park, that's there, the forty-five acres, not the industrial portion, but the county's owned park property.
So the aquatic center?
Aquatic center is inside of Green Valley Park, that's forty-five acres of the industrial park. It's not, no longer industrial park, it's fallen county property.
Okay, so.
Yes, ma'am.
The reason I'm saying that is because last year or two years ago, um, you came, you came to us with a recommendation that you, that Public Works could only cut six feet off the road edge. Am I understanding that correctly?
We did a system that it's not necessarily six feet, um, it could vary, it goes to the ditch and then just that top side of the ditch, and then we don't go past the ditch. Or we don't do somebody else's property.
So if the ditch is twenty-five feet from the edge of the road, you cut to the ditch?
That's correct.
If it's five feet, you cut to the ditch, is that what you're saying?
Yes, unless that ditch on the twenty-five feet is just completely away from any site distances, then I may cut eighteen feet. So it depends on the actual road, depends on the intersections, the site distances, that's all determined. We don't have any roads that are same, I don't have the same right of ways of multiple right of ways, so we do it as we move forward.
So, so I'm saying that when you came to us about the time savings and the money savings by not cutting up to the ditch, my understanding was that there was a uniform cut that was going down the road, because we've had people to complain that we didn't go on the other side of the ditch. So you're saying to me, there is no uniform level? Because that, I, if I were somebody and my neighbor got five feet cut and I got twelve feet cut, I would be wanting to know why. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand, I hear you say that we've saved money, but don't you feel like if there were uniformity in how we were doing it, you would be, better be able to gauge savings, use of the equipment, petrol, whatever else, man hours?
I think I can plug that in, and we could go ahead and determine that with some real-life outputs. Yes, ma'am. I could take a look at that, and we could go to the ditch in all situations, this next cutting season, the first round, and we could look at the data on that, of course.
So you said we were able to get four cutting?
Almost four cuts this year.
How many grass cutting crews do you have?
We had three.
Okay, and that's with the mower and the equipment you have presently?
That's, that's right, that's with the, two, two of those three crews just have the flail and a ZTR, and then another crew is still using the old tractors. So I want to replace those old tractors with the new, and then those ZTRs are just regular ZTRs, so that would be replacing those ZTRs with the new, um, Hill ZTRs.
Oh, is the ZTR the yellow?
Yes, ma'am.
Thingy?
Right, it's, it's really, they just came out with it a couple of years ago, Cub Cadet. Um, we weren't believers until we went, I actually sent a crew to Coweta County, and they went and observed over there, and then when we purchased one for Parks, then we actually put it on the road before we did Parks, and I actually spent a half a day on this machine, and it's, it's a game changer.
And who drives the machines, the inmates or the?
This would be an inmate driving the ZTR, yes, ma'am.
And what kind of training do they get?
So there's a, first thing that the CI looks for is they look for past tractor experience or track ground, the past grounds equipment experience, and then we also have a rodeo every year, so we actually physically watch the inmates, uh, operate, and then of course, we train throughout the year as well. So inmates will start, like, this crew has like a weed eater, man, they can start on that, and then we can work them to pieces of equipment as we need as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and, uh, just a couple of things, uh, noteworthy here, um, is the message boards, you'll see that I'm requesting, uh, some message boards. These have been tremendously, um, beneficial to the county. Currently, I have them out now, um, advertising the warming station, I have one out at Blaylock because of the driveway situation, um, they do town hall meetings. Uh, we have four, and you're gonna see in my request here, and I'm asking for another four. Uh, honestly, don't think we could have enough of these, uh, because of the special need that we have all the time for getting a message out, uh, to the community. Uh, they're very helpful when we have to detour roads, emergency situations, um, they've been, oh, well worth having them. So this is the actual request then, um, I had seven hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars requested, uh, you'll see here that I've actually, uh, reduced some of these, um, the pole barn, uh, this, I actually cut this in half, uh, like all of our new stormwater equipment, a lot of our new equipment is actually sitting outside, we just don't have enough space to put stuff under a cover, uh, this should really help us with that a lot. Uh, we've never had an emergency light tower before, this is becoming pretty standard in Public Works. The City of Griffin has one.
Did you say stormwater equipment?
Yep. That you all approved a couple of months ago. So I have three pieces of equipment that are sitting outside right now, I don't have a place to park them. So this would be some of that equipment, and then I have a, a several other pieces of equipment that are not parked underneath a, a roof. Uh, it helps a lot when we keep this equipment out of the, uh, weather. It also helps like, so later on this week, I may have four trucks spreading sand or salt, so it's good to preload that, and then I have a place to put it where it doesn't get wet, it's not exposed to elements, so we use it for a lot of different things. Um, this will be the first time we have an emergency light tower, uh, for about, we've seen this, uh, City of Griffin and in most of the counties around us, this is extremely helpful when we have these large, uh, storm incidences, uh, when we have multiple trees on the ground, this really is very helpful, uh, nighttime. We've never done it before, uh, we have rented it in the last, when the hurricane came through, we actually rented some, we actually used them at the EOC as well, which I was glad we had them, because we were gonna have to get one, and I kinda got a couple the day before. Um, I think this will be very beneficial to us, and we could see how this program works.
How, what's the rental cost on them?
They're about twelve hundred dollars a week. Um, one thing that we found at the hurricane is, uh, only because I had some connections, I was able to even find any, so it would be nice to have, you know, some of our own. Uh, and this could also be used for anything in the county, uh, if you're doing, like your flu shots, uh, if we do things like that at night, uh, it'll be very handy for multiple things. Uh, I did have one in there, but I reduced that price to just do one. Uh, the auto flagger, uh, we ha, we have one that we got last year, I don't think we need more than one, so I've taken that out. Uh, you can see that I did go from two of the message boards to four. Uh, I did have two that was approved in a request, but, um, these, when these are needed, we need them pretty bad, and they've been extremely helpful. Like I said, they're advertising, uh, actual warming stations tonight. Uh, large equipment trailers in there, this is for our larger pieces of equipment. Of course, the flail mower we talked about, the ZTRs we talked about, uh, motor grader blower, I have one already, that's actually, uh, on one of our crews, so this is just for the other motor grader crew. Uh, four fifty dump, you're gonna see here in a minute that I'm asking to surplus four of these dumps, so I need to re, this would be to replace, uh, one of those. A barricade truck, our barricade truck is from nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, it was the original Parks and Rec grounds crew, so when we started grounds in nineteen ninety-seven, we actually, um, created the first crew cab dovetail landscape trailer that's supreme ever made, uh, and we're still using that, uh, for our barricade truck. It's twenty, twenty-six years old now, uh, it's definitely time for a new one, it's reliable, that will start, that will be able to get the barricades out there. Um, we're able to close multiple roads at one time on a single trip. Took out the project manager, uh, thankfully, we have a person who is staying, and then Parks needs a new pickup truck. Uh, this is for the, the crew that, uh, is for the senior center in Ambux, uh, they're in a nineteen ninety-nine vehicle that needs to be replaced, um, and that would just be a regular crew cab pickup.
What was it that you said about the F-four fifty dump truck?
Uh, that'd be for Public Works, I'm actually gonna surplus four of those.
How many do you have total?
Four fifties? Hmm, I'm gonna refer to Kevin, I think four, three or four? We have four.
You have four?
Yes.
You're gonna surplus four?
Mm-mm, that's four that we're using, and then we're gonna surplus four on the next page. So this will be from one of those four, one of those, um.
You have eight, four that you're using and four that you want to surplus.
That's right.
So the total, answer my question, is you have eight?
Yes, ma'am, eight, I'm sorry.
And so what is actually working on the road now? Four trucks?
Yes, those four trucks are working on the road.
Okay, so I guess I'm trying to figure out why we need to buy four more?
I don't.
If you have four that's working?
I'm only asking.
Why wouldn't you want to get two so that there's one, so if one breaks? I'm just trying to figure out, I, I'm not mad at you about trying to use your stuff.
No, 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 I'm only asking for one.
Okay.
That's it.
So you want to surplus the four?
Yes, ma'am.
And purchase one?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you plan to su, purchase that one with what you surplus the others for?
That's on the next page.
I, I don't have a page, I'm just.
I'm sorry.
Just going through whatever y'all showing us.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so you only want one F-four fifty and you want to surplus four?
Right, I think that if we'll skip ahead two pages, actually, these are the units that I want to surplus, there's five, um, the barricade truck would come later, so there'll actually be six. Um, I'm thinking about a hundred thousand dollars from surplus vehicles, so I could decrease this actual request. Um, and as you know, uh, these are numbers that I have to put in there to be safe, uh, but we're really good at finding deals and negotiating. We, we typically can find tremendous savings, I just have to be ready to act on those when we find those deals, you have to move very quickly. So I would anticipate this request to be even less by the time I finish purchasing everything. So we anticipate this actual request, originally was seven fifty-one, I think I'll be at a minimum of six-ten and probably be below that after purchases are made. And these were all, uh, items inside of the supplemental requests that you had approved during the budget process.
Is that your end of yours?
Yes.
Okay, uh, now, make sure precision of language with me. Uh, we said supplemental was beyond the budget, needed but unfunded at this time. Uh, and these were pay-as-you-go for one of the definition to me. Pay-as-you-go meant you had money to be able to purchase these because of, uh, we were gonna pay a thousand dollars for gasoline and we only had to pay eight hundred, so we had twenty, so you've pulled this money in, so out of this stuff is money you've, you've got somewhere that we've been able to save?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I wanted to make sure, all right.
What did you just say again?
It's from savings.
It's from savings th- th- so far this year. Uh, the supplemental was pay-as-you-go, that means you had, we, Steve had to save the money to be able to go in and start paying for this. So off of our budget request, there shouldn't be anything new on the budget.
No, it should be already in the budget, I understand, thank you.
All right, any other questions on, uh, TJ? We'll, we'll vote on this tonight.
My only question was, this is stuff that was, this is all in contained in that, what we looked at?
Supplemental.
August or whatever it was.
Yes, sir, that's correct, this is the last of it, and as you see, I've been taking out items that either we found other options for, or felt that I could be a little bit more responsible with.
Did the supplemental there include surplus in vehicles and that kind of stuff, like, did that include like those of the offsets already?
No, it did not.
It was just the cost there, okay.
Correct, yes.
Because I, I'm still got that total number pegged in my mind, and I'm just making sure that, how far away?
We've been saving on all of it, and I apologize, Mr. Chairman, but I won't be here this evening, so I, if there was any additional questions.
All right, uh, the key thing to me is, uh, we're saving money, and this isn't costing us anything, we asked Steve to be able to do that, and as he saved the money to be able to do it, we will purchase these items as we go along. Okay, all right, TJ, thank you on that one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you.
TJ, please be careful.
Yes sir.
Item number five, consider approval of contract between Spalding County and Three Rivers with Transit Services. And the wonderful Jeannie Bartley, Brently's here to speak to us. Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm here under, I guess it's a different cover, usually it's C S B G, but this is Transit.
Jeannie, can you get the microphone closer to you or something?
Is that close? Is that good?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is for the Transit Services, the contract for actually F Y twenty-five. We submitted that and I think you actually split the cost with the City of Griffin. So the contract is seventy thousand. Split the cost with the City of Griffin, so it's thirty-five and thirty-five thousand. I did provide you with a handout and it just gives some highlights about Transit Services. And it looks at the costs, you see the, I'm gonna jump down to item number three. So we split your trips into public trips and to the DHS trips. And those DHS trips are for the senior centers or those special needs, the adult daycare center trips. That's what we're projecting for F Y twenty-five and it's about thirty-five, I'm sorry, thirty-three thousand five hundred and seventy trips. Fourteen thousand eight hundred and forty-seven hours to provide those trips. Section four there speaks about the operational cost associated with providing those trips for Spalding County. I'll jump back to that first paragraph. We do have a statement in there about, and I apologize, there's a typo, about DHS services. So right now, we do have a DHS contract. But they did this year put out a bid for the DHS contract services. So these are the trips that DHS pays for, for the seniors to go to the senior center or those special needs, trips that we provide for the, the D B H D, the adult daycare. We are looking to see, we don't know how that DHS contract is gonna pan out for this year. If we lose those funds totally, and we're hoping that won't happen, the cost for the counties may increase significantly beyond this year. But right now, we still have that contract in place. And even if they bid the contract out to another entity, right now DHS has about twenty-one contracts that, where it's subcontracts with individuals to provide their, their trips. They are looking to reduce that twenty-one down to two. So there would be one provider from Macon North. And the other provider would be below Macon South. We don't know how that's gonna happen. Those bids have been completed. We don't know why they decided to do it because, I mean, we've had a pretty good working relationship. So we are, we're trying to see how we're gonna provide those trips. You know, we have about roughly thirty buses in our system that we use to provide the trips in the seven counties. So an entity that comes in would have to have a lot of vehicles to provide trips, you know, for all of the subcontractors from Macon to, well, all over the state of Georgia, so.
But Jeannie, don't, don't these buses belong to DHS?
No, they don't belong, they belong to G dot and.
And Three Rivers?
Right now, the ones that we're purchasing, well, because we got into the transit system, they are beginning to title the buses to us. Now the, we've got about five buses that we purchased a year ago. And those buses, we purchased those with some special funding. So it was the Georgia Transit Trust Fund. So we purchased those and those are Three Rivers. DHS, I mean, I'm sorry, G dot is beginning to title buses to Three Rivers now. Because we're in the, the transit business. But DHS, they only purchase services, they don't own any buses, not DHS.
So, so I guess my question would be if, if there were five buses that were listed as Spalding County buses? And I know that part of the reason why Three Rivers wants to kinda get away from it being a Pike or Henry or whatever name on the bus is because it should just be a transit system. If we have five buses, that means that we're responsible for all, we're responsible for insurance and liability for those buses, am I correct?
The counties aren't individually, we actually pay that cost right now.
So, but according to what this contract says, the county is going to be responsible for their buses and Three Rivers will pay for their buses. Because what I'm trying, what I'm trying to understand is that if there are no longer gonna be county buses assigned, then how do we get to what it is that we're supposed to pay? We already have to pay into Three Rivers the one dollar per resident. So we're right at about seventy-something thousand dollars. And then you're saying that in addition to what we're paying into Three Rivers for, for those services, we, between the city and the county, we have another seventy thousand dollars that we have to pay for the transit.
Right, yeah, the, the, the dollar per capita is mandated by the state because of the Regional Planning Agency.
Right.
A little separate from this.
Right, I totally understand that. But, but I'm, I'm just trying to understand, cause I know the past couple of years, we have not collected. But I also know that Three Rivers has had private companies doing this. And part of this has been that none of those worked out. And so that's why we're here where we are. So I'm just trying to understand if there are buses that belong to Spalding County, which I'm assuming we still have some that belong to Spalding County?
There are about seven buses that have, that's Spalding County.
That's correct.
That we own? That are titled.
That are titled to Spalding County. So, so what I'm trying to get at is how many buses do we need? Because if we don't use seven buses and Three Rivers has already purchased buses for basically the same thing, why are we going to take responsibility, insurance and liability for vehicles that I guess should be sitting somewhere?
Well, we actually take.
Or should be surplus.
Yeah, we actually take the.
Or should be used in a different way.
Say, say again, Jeannie?
We actually take the responsibility for the liability on those buses, so we.
So when we were at the last Three Rivers meeting, I asked that and they said, no. Three Rivers takes responsibility for their buses. The counties have to take responsibility for buses that are entitled to them.
We pay for the insurance for all of the buses. So we cover that expense for all of those.
And you're saying that that comes out of the seventy thousand dollars?
It helps to pay towards that policy, yes.
So, so, yeah, I'm just a little confused because I left the last meeting understanding something different than what you're saying. And so I really just need to understand where we as a county stand in terms of what our property is and what our responsibility for our property is. Because even though we will be using them in the Three Rivers system, we're not part of who they're taking responsibility for.
So all of the buses go into the system, it's, so we have a five county system. The, we provide seven counties. We provide the transit services for seven counties. Two of our counties only operate within their counties. The other buses operate within five counties. So your buses may operate in Butts County, they may go to Upson County.
Yeah, five county area, I understand that. And so each county is paying into this system. So we're seventy thousand dollars in.
It's about two hundred and forty thousand dollars altogether that all of the counties will pay.
So I just wanna make sure that I understand you correctly that we are not going to be responsible for providing liability and insurance coverage for these vehicles.
We do that.
That are titled to Spalding County, that are part of your armada.
We actually secure it. And I'll get some more clarity as to how that work, but we actually secure that insurance policy.
I know, I hear you saying secure, I'm trying to find out who's paying for it. So, so, am I the only one that?
Great use of the word armada as well.
So, so, so how timely, Jeannie, are we on coming up with this contract? Cause I think we would like to have some finite answers so that Steve will know how to go forth in looking at our budget in time.
Us being the owner, sorry to be the lawyer appear, but like I go, are we liable if this gets in a wreck? Like, if it's your buses, you're liable. If we, if it's our buses. Right? So we need to make sure that the insurance isn't just minimum insurance, but it's definitely gonna cover us if, you know what I'm saying? Like, and we don't.
And we do, we have certain requirements that we have to make. So we do make sure we have what's required for DHS and what's required for G dot as far as the coverage goes. So we do cover that.
It's addressed in the agreement as well.
Say again, Stephanie?
It's addressed in the agreement as well.
Okay, so I've read through that and it wasn't really clear to me. That's why I'm asking these questions. Because Michael, I, I specifically asked this at the last meeting when they started talking about Three Rivers was creating their own, like, they're purchasing their own buses and putting their logo on it. And there still may be some that says Spalding or Henry, but they're basically starting their own set of stuff. So I'm specifically asking them at the meeting and the explanation I got that was that we were responsible for our stuff, even though it would still be monitored or, you know, they would use it appropriately and that they would be responsible for theirs.
And I think securing it, which is actually obtaining the insurance and who's actually responsible for paying for it and who is the named insured, which is you because you're entitled to it. So if you have title to that vehicle, then you're going to be the named insured. But Three Rivers is going to be an additional insured. And it works the same way in reverse for vehicles that are titled in Three Rivers but are used for Spalding County.
Is our insurance worth it?
Stephanie, that, that, that does not make sense for, for them to insure our vehicles and us to insure our vehicles.
So it's, being an additional insured, named insured, doesn't mean that, that you're actually insuring it or the other way around. It, it means that for their vehicles, they're purchasing the insurance, but they're adding as an addition Spalding County as a named insured. Because when someone gets sued, when someone wants to sue, they sue everybody.
I mean, I get that.
So they're gonna sue everybody who, who might have a claim. And so having us named as an additional insured isn't an additional insurance policy. It's just an additional entity on that same policy. So that when Three Rivers gets sued and Spalding County gets sued, we all have coverage.
Okay, so I, I hear what you're saying. My question was about who was paying the bill?
And I, I think that's where the thirty-five thousand comes in. Because as Jeannie said, a portion of that is going to go to.
Where the money is coming from to pay it. And if it's generating out of Three Rivers, that's fine. But if it's generating from us, then there's some different conversation that we, we wanna have about.
And I think that part of your thirty-five thousand probably goes to, to pay some insurance premiums.
The insurance premium is, yeah.
Among other things.
It's about five hundred and eighty-two thousand is what the insurance coverage is.
Right, but, but, but I'm also saying, with the five counties we're talking about, I know that each one of us is not paying a hundred, plus a hundred thousand dollars plus to make sure that we're paying for these buses that we were driving before y'all got those three buses. So, so that is, I, I would just like to be able to have some clarity as to who is taking the insurance out. I don't have a problem with being named as a person, but I wanna know if that is going to require us to put additional money or coverage based on the level of coverage we have.
Actually, the way that I read the contract, it did not require, it was thirty-five all stop. Which is still unfunded because over the last, what, three years, the COVID money has been paying for these services. This is the first year that this contract has come back before us, actually since I've gotten here. So it.
Yeah, I was thinking we were still paying it, but I just found out at the meeting.
Twenty sixteen was the last time they requested money from the county.
Yeah, COVID wasn't until twenty nineteen.
So it, it was long before COVID. Somebody else was paying these, these costs for us.
So I.
At seventy thousand.
I wouldn't be asking it if I hadn't asked that question and got a different answer. So, so that's, that's all, only reason I'm asking, I just wanna make sure.
Alright, we're gonna vote on this in the, this evening. What's the specific question we need to have ask so that Jeannie can get that back to Steve? So we'll have that answer so that when we get ready to vote tonight, we'll have it.
The question for me is what entity will ensure the vehicles that have Spalding County name on the buses at present? And if it is you guys, you've already said that you would name us. But if it is us, then we need more information about us paying the bill. The insurance bill. If, if that's what the cost is. Because then in that case, we need to know kinda specific what it costs for each vehicle.
And this is a brand-new requirement for us.
Right.
This is out-of-budget issue, so this is a big issue for us to step into. Alright, you two got that, what that question is? Okay, and we'll be, you get those answers to us, we'll be able to make a decision this evening. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. I don't think Jeannie was finished.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's just if you had a question about the, the contract, but yeah, I'm good.
Thank you, Jeannie, once again. Item number six, this afternoon, we will hold the first reading of resolution amending the code of ordinances for Spalding County, Georgia at part seven, motor vehicles and traffic. Chapter one, general traffic regulations, section seven, one zero zero four, no parking zones on streets. Subsection A thirty, Richardson Street repealing conflicting ordinances and parts thereof, restating the code as modified by this ordinance and for other purposes. County Attorney, Ms. Wyndham.
Mr. Chairman, I was asked to amend the no parking area for Richardson Road. As we had it labeled as Richardson Road, it is actually Richardson Street. The, the, one in your agenda packet for the workshop is not the correct version though. After some back and forth with Mr. Amberger, it was determined that the intention was not just to make, so, so Richardson Road is, Richardson Street, sorry, starts at Kilgore and goes about four hundred and twenty-five feet and then turns and goes towards Dobbin's Mill, a little over a thousand feet. Currently, only one side of the road on the Dobbin's Mill stretch is no parking. So we had added no parking on the other side of the Dobbin, of the Dobbin's Mill stretch. But Mr. Amberger indicated that it was really supposed to be and that he had spoken with U Commissioner Flowers Taylor, the entirety of Richardson Street. So that is what the resolution that you'll be voting on tonight says that upon any portion of the roadway or public right of way of Richardson Street from Kilgore Road to Dobbin's Mill Road. So no parking on either side of the street for the entirety of that street.
So just to, to give y'all a little background, more than fifteen years ago, the lady that came in with the complaint came in and I felt like it was a neighbor-to-neighbor thing. However, after we went out, there was evidence that there is abusive parking in the street. Most of the, most of the residences, there are homes, they have yards, so you can clearly park in a yard. And so when she came back and started asking questions about it, that, that they had just, people had started back parking, I was trying, and then code enforcement went out and they didn't really have a rule to go by. We started looking at this and that was not what was passed by the board. The other thing that concerned me is that what is our policy on parking on county roads, period? I don't think it should just be reflective of Richardson Road. Would we have somebody be able to go out on Macintosh and just park on the side of the road?
Your ordinance specifies roads that, where there is no, no street parking allowed. And sometimes it's one side of the street, sometimes it's both sides of the, sides of the street, but it's from one intersection to another. It may not be the entirety of the, of that particular road and there's a list.
That there is no uniformity to that. Because that's saying if I go out Highway sixteen and where Bart Miller used to live, if I just wanna pull off on the side of the road and park right there and walk up the hill to his house, I could do that. And my children could come behind me and they could park.
Well, on, on sixteen, that's probably a bad example that you're making.
Well, yeah, cause that's a state road. But, but I'm saying Macintosh or Vaughn Road or, or any road. I think that uniformly, we need. I think that uniformly we need, people need to understand whether or not it is allowed for them to park. Certainly not in the right way, not in the lane, the roadway, but even on our right of way.
My assumption has been that that particular ordinance has been complaint driven over the years, uh, over the decades, not just the years, but decades.
Yeah. I, I, I wouldn't want there to be a blanket, no parking on sides of county roads because I, I, for example, Sun City. If somebody's going to have ten people at their house, they've only got two spots in the driveway and everyone's going to park on the road.
But that is different. If you're having a party, you say your neighbors, I'm going to be here, but you don't block the driveway. I mean, if you're having a party every night.
That's understandable.
Or your family's having a reunion. I mean, this is what neighbors do.
Parking your Mack truck, that's different.
Right. Or every day when you come home from work, you just park in the road.
Yeah.
So, and it, it takes me kind of back to what happened out on, what's the street out here going out, Zebulon Road? Where we had the lady come and complain about the gentleman without his yard equipment and stuff in the road. I just think that, and maybe, maybe we can't do it, but certainly there should be some uniformity where we would say. No parking on county roads or county right of ways and these would be the exceptions. You know, if you have a permit to, for amplification for an event or if you're having an event and, and, and I don't know. You've notified your neighbors or whatever, because I know people do stuff. I mean, this is Griffin. People's families for generations have been meeting at Mama's house on Sunday and eating. And that's fine. But if you got a whole yard and nobody is parking in it, I got a problem with that. So I think keeping the roadway safe, we should not pick and choose. They're all county roads. Let's try to figure out how we can do it and then give people the option to do it in a way that it doesn't. Uh, violate people's safety that live on the street, doesn't violate the safety of any traffic and that you, you let people know.
Not, not a blanket, no parking, but like a, hey, no long-term parking, no regular parking. Hey, if you're having an event and people got to park down the street, that's one thing, but yeah.
So, so I don't know what, what the ordinance is, but I think in terms of.
How you define long-term as well.
You, you, you know, we can't say, okay, you can park on, um, you can park on Armstead Circle, but you can't park on North Second Street. Why?
Right.
Why? They're both county roads. So, so uniformity isn't always the, the easiest answer. But I think it's the kind that you can defend.
Yeah.
And, and it, it could also be that some of these roads have narrower, narrower, narrower. I'll get it out in a second. Rights of way as opposed to others because, uh, you know, some of them have thirty, forty feet. Whereas others have seventy, eighty. And so for some, there's just really not room without causing a danger and others there is.
All right. Let's, uh, uh, I, I think one, the one tonight is, is fine for us to pass, Richardson Street. Uh, and let's take on the task of.
Uh, I will check with other jurisdictions to find out what they're doing for their county roads with respect to parking.
You know, I, I looked at the one we were doing today on High Falls, I think it was, that Muhammad was doing. You put it, you park on that road.
Somebody's going to get hit.
Yes. So I think your point is, uh, well taken, Commissioner.
And I didn't put my two cents in on this one.
Yes, please.
I know like four or five different families on that street and that lady that's complaining, it's been very vindictive about the whole deal. And I, I know, I'm not.
I know the history. I, I know the history and, and I'm not on either side of the road.
And I know these, these people that parked on this street for decades and decades and.
Well, they weren't supposed to for the last two decades because we had an ordinance that said they weren't supposed to. But, but, and, and I, like I said, I'm not mad at them for having family gather, gatherings. But there is a level of being conscientious of the safety of others and respecting. People's property that you can drop, back out of your driveway and not have to try to worry about if you're going to hit somebody's car.
And like me being a street cop back in the day, like right through Hampton, I mean, it's, it's neighborhoods everywhere. You didn't, if the car was, if it was parked within a foot of the curb anywhere and you could safely get around it, we didn't mess with them. And that's, and that was citywide. I mean, that was country road, dark road. That was everything up there. So I mean, that's, I, I just kind of got a, a different opinion about it on that.
Well, yeah. I mean, we're, we're not quite that metropolis, but I think at some, at some level, we need to, and I don't know. Would that be different in a subdivision? Would that be different if you have a homeowners association that says you can park a vehicle on the road? We, 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 we need to narrow it down to the specifics of what we can be in charge of.
I've never read any covenants and I've read a lot of restrictive covenants, um, that allowed parking on the street.
So, so this is like, not like a new thing. People are not doing that. That's why you get a two-car garage and a long driveway.
Which is why we require a driveway and a garage.
So that's what I'm saying. That's not your parking spot.
But we agree. Now, but I want to make sure if there's questions about tonight.
Tonight, we're good.
Okay. All right. Uh, item number seven, uh, discuss the, uh, revision of the alcohol ordinance to require server permits. For employees of establishment holding a liquor beverage license for retail sales of alcohol beverages. County attorney, we're back at it again.
Uh, so Mr. Chairman, this is an amendment to the alcohol ordinance that we passed several months ago. Um, regarding server permits. I had provided y'all with the city of Decatur's, um, requirements. As well as with a copy of their application and this resolution does mirror that for server permits. Um, it would require any licensed establishment when they hire a, a server of alcohol. That server would have to be eighteen years of, of age or older. And I, I actually just. Put that number in there to match the rest of the ordinance. So, um, city of Decatur had nineteen. You can make that age, whatever you want it to be. But, um, I, I made it, um, match the rest of the ordinance, which was the age of eighteen as far as for grocery stores and that sort of thing. Um, and it would require that within four days of them beginning work, that they would obtain. Uh, or at least apply for the server permit. It would be done through community development. They would fill out an application. This would be one of the fees that you would set, which I'm hoping that y'all will set those fees very soon. For, um, alcohol related permits and such. Um, because you can, in, in the ordinance, we have that you can, um, amend those fees by resolution once every calendar year. So I would love to see that done in at least February at the latest.
What is, where on our agenda tonight in the packet is that located?
This resolution is not on the agenda for tonight in case that you, in case you wanted to have additional discussion about it.
I do have some questions.
Yeah. I have it as a first reading on February third and a second reading on February seventeenth.
So let me just share with you my concerns. If I worked at, at Longhorns and then I had a second job at Chili's. That means I got to come and get two separate.
Yes, ma'am.
That's cumbersome.
Yeah, I agree.
It's cumbersome and, and, and.
I think the license should go with the server. That way if the person fires you, you don't lose your license. That should be your license. I have a server license.
So, and the server should be just as responsible. I mean, yeah, if you're the owner of the establishment that sells alcohol. Yes, you're responsible to make sure you have somebody that has a legal service license. But if they violate the law, do we have something here that says, if you sell my liquor to an al, to a minor, you can't get a service license for a year? Or you, you know, we don't have anything like that.
That would be part of the application so that, a, and in the application, actually, they do have to, to, um, disclose. Things like any, yeah, violations.
So my point is, is that it would be nice if your boss said, okay, I'll pay for you to, to go and get the thing filled out. But then when you leave, that went with that store. If the server themselves has to be licensed to physically come up and get permission. I don't care where they get the money from. They get it from their boss, but it's their paper. Then if there's anything that happens wrong, the repercussions fall on them as well as the institution where they work.
Yes, ma'am. I agree with you wholeheartedly. In fact, I, I reached back out to double check this, but Fayetteville and Petrie City actually have a reciprocal agreement between the two. They're cities, not the county. Uh, and if you've got a alcohol servers permit inside the city of Fayetteville, then Petrie City will, uh, will recognize that permit for you to sell. If you have one in Petrie City, Fayetteville will recognize it. So you could have jobs in both cities and be able to do exactly what you, yeah, just have one permit. Uh, and, and you're right, it should not matter where that twenty-five or fifty bucks or whatever the permit fee that you, you set comes from. It, uh, that permit is the responsibility of the person who owns the permit, not the store.
But I think if, if, as, as currently written, if the store is applying for it, if then the store gets flagged. Somebody else at Longhorn sells and so we pull Longhorn's, uh, like, I'm just using this as a crazy hypothetical. But I work at Chili's as well. Wait a minute, I just lost my permit because Longhorn lost, you, you see, I, we want to avoid that.
Right.
But we also want to avoid Longhorn firing somebody they don't like. And now they've got to go get another license. Because that person, but at the same time, if that person sells alcohol to their friend that's under eighteen and then they lose their license. Longhorn shouldn't lose their license. It was the server who did something wrong.
Because they've taken the RAS class and.
Correct. Yeah. It, it should go to the permit holder, not to both.
The organization, the store or whatever. So, so the, um, let me see what I was going to ask. One other little question.
I think he's, I think he's doing sound.
Okay. My brain's not working for a minute.
All right. Now remember, this is just simply an opportunity to pass on, what do we want in the ordinance? She gave it to us, this opportunity to say, hey, I'm going to bring it back in the first of, uh, February for the first meeting, for the first reading and then the second reading. So this is our opportunity. And if you don't have, think of something now, you can do it later, but we've got, all got to see it. So if you send something to her and say, I'd like to have this changed to add this part of the other, please include all of us. So that we all see what you're trying to do. We don't get into the meeting and say, all right.
So, so what I'm hearing now is that the permit will go with the server and if they work at multiple locations, they just need the one permit.
And, and one, one other thing, Stephanie, we have people come annually to get their alcohol licenses renewed. So we should require people to annually have their server license renewed.
This is an annual, it's a calendar year.
But it should follow the same process. So if there's no violations, we shouldn't have to vote on, you know what I'm saying? Like.
It, it, there's nothing in here that you guys would have to vote on. Um, it's the, as long as they pass the background check. And the, the application is filled out appropriately, then they would get it. If the community development director or his designate didn't feel like they got it, then they have the right to appeal to the county manager. That's how it's written currently.
This is all administrative.
So as a business owner, and I have people who work for me that, that are serving alcohol. I come in here to get my license renewed. I should be able to show that the people working for me have renewed theirs. Or that their license has a renewal. I'm trying to, to do the checks and balances. So that we don't come in and allow somebody to renew their establishment's license. And you're not going back and checking to see if, if Gwen got her server's license approved. So Gwen might be rolling up in the store. Serving alcohol with an expired license.
Petrie City and Fayetteville, they wear it like around.
They do. You're required to wear it.
Yes.
So, so yeah, I just, some, some way that there is the ability to have some checks and balances between. Because we want the owner to take responsibility for his stuff and the server to take responsibility for their stuff. But we need to know that when we're renewing your licensing every year, that you're not letting people work who haven't gotten their.
I just want to make sure that our requirements are more or less the same as Petrie Cities and Fayettevilles and everybody else's. So that once this passes, we can reach out to them and say, hey, you guys want to do a reciprocal thing just like Petrie City and Fayetteville, you know?
I mean, I think that would be a good thing for people to be able to, to work.
All right. Director Allen?
I just, I assume the intent is to have a badge like this?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to need to do a, I guess, a badge machine upstairs and print them out and go from there. Okay.
All right. Uh, so this is the first step. Think through this as you're at a place where alcohol is served. Hey, we got to do this and get the issue. We want to vote on this. You know, this has been going on and on and on. Uh, this was our answer for alcohol. So let's try to get it ready to go. So first reading in, uh, February.
And, and also if you see anything that you want added to the application that's not included here, let me know that as well.
Do you need money, uh, fee?
Um, we.
We would sense that fee by schedule.
By schedule. Yes. Not including it in the ordinance. We're going to set those by resolution.
Huh. Good. Okay.
We.
James?
I think we need to make it clear. I don't want a restaurant that doesn't have its own alcohol permit to go, well, they have server permits. So they can, you see what I'm saying?
It's clear. It's clear in the ordinance that they, you have to be serving at a licensed establishment.
Okay. All right. Everybody square on that one? All right. Last is, uh, discussion to, uh, the, for the need of, uh, county staff attorney.
Mr. Chairman, before you go into that, let me ask you a question. Did, did Steve, did you talk about the software?
I, I missed it.
Presentation of a new software confirmed and asset essentials?
Yes, ma'am. That was, um.
Presentation, uh, TJ.
That was TJ much earlier.
Okay. About like the dude?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay.
He gave the whole speech. Okay. All right. Uh, uh, this is, uh, I want to start off with. This is not a reflection on, Becca and Murray, on what they can do. Uh, they're very skilled attorneys. Uh, this is more of an issue of, uh, being able to, uh, handle workload. Uh, things that are, I hate to say this, below their level to be able to get done internally. Uh, we think a staff attorney, uh, like the city has been doing forever or for a long period of time. I think the timing is right for this to be able to do this. Um, this year there is a whole bunch of rules that are going on, uh, statewide that we need to take a look at. Uh, they're, they're changing laws and everything else. So my, uh, the reason we're bringing this forward is, uh, to talk about. Hiring a staff attorney to work on Steve's staff.
I mean, I knew that we were, two years ago, we were looking for, uh, an assistant county manager that also had a JD. So maybe, and you know, last year we were looking at two deputy county managers. Maybe this also functions as a second one of those as well. Like, uh, Jessica was that when she was the assistant county manager. She was also the county, I mean, a city manager. You know what I'm saying? Like.
She, so she was hired as, um, staff attorney and then was promoted to chief of staff. But when she was chief of staff, her duties significantly changed from her staff attorney duties.
I, I mean, I know she kept prosecuting the district court and kept doing all the, you know, it was like a second circle, but it was sort of a Venn diagram of, yeah.
We asked for some things to be written fairly quickly and, and it, to take it over to Becca and Gwen. A staff attorney could knock that out in the next couple of hours and be able to bring it back for us to do. That's the timing issue and the speed that what I'm looking for. Um, I believe that truly the, um, advantage we have seen with hiring, um, PEs.
Yep.
Uh, especially on the water authority and hiring Joseph has reduced our costs that we're paying Becca and Murray to be able to do this with. Uh, so I'm, uh, I think there's a need there to be able to do it.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I agree with you. I think, uh, bringing stuff in-house does help. It, it, it helps with the continuity. But there's just some things that I know that we asked Stephanie to do that has a, and I don't want to make, make this sound like it's not important. They don't, they're, they're on the level of, oh my God, not, I got to do it right now. But if there is something that we need to get done and we have an attorney to do it, we will still need someone to review it to make sure that it's legal. Just like right now, we don't have anybody to review your stuff. We're just trusting in God that, that, that is. But some of this stuff that we just need to get to run, run through, we need somebody here to do it. And for that reason, I would certainly be interested in looking at it because having two sets of eyes is never bad. Um, whoever comes here, if they don't have a government experience, they're going, they're going to be a walkthrough. Anyway, you know, they'll, they'll, they'll learn what, what Stephanie teaches them that they need to know. But in the interim, as an attorney, there's some stuff they're going to know how to do or they'll know what to ask her in her office in order to get it done. So I'm just looking at the expedition, expediting things more. And I think it's.
Yeah. It's, it's not turning one off and turning the other on. There is sort of.
It's add another layer to it.
Yeah.
And, and on a personal note, I can tell you that I've worked on a number of things with the city of Griffin. So I've worked with Kelsey Andrew separately and Kelsey Andrew together. So it's, it, it can work well when it, when it's done correctly.
All right. Any, any other, my issue is.
So money. Uh, let's, let's just talk about money.
We'll work that. If, if, if all of us kind of agree that yes, we're, we're willing to go forward and talk about that, then we'll move forward. Because the alternative was to get another RFP for another.
No, no. We, we, we need somebody that, I mean, Stephanie makes herself available to us and even sometimes for BS. No, no, we, we, we need somebody that, I mean, Stephanie makes herself available to us and even sometimes for BS. But, um, but somebody who we could ask a question, who should know some of this stuff in government? And then roll with it, or she could say, no, you need to do blah, 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 and then.
Kelsey Andrew is a great concept to be able to make that work, to be able to do that.
Let's, if everybody's in agreement.
But we would certainly be, uh, calling on Beck Owens Murray a lot less. And so, it would save us a lot of the, the money that Beck Owens charges us, you know what I'm saying, that we could put towards a full-time per, you know what I mean, like it.
So.
It's not just.
Well, I, I don't.
Pulling on Beck Owens Murray.
I don't think that an attorney, I mean, I don't know what Kelsey's experience is, but she's been there two or three years working for Jessica. But your experience is not going to match the level of what, what we get from Beck Owens Murray. What I'm looking for is someone who can expeditiously do our work. It has always rubbed me the wrong way that Stephanie has had to write our ordinances. I, I, I think the ordinance, the zoning attorney and the, where's our guy?
He lives.
Yeah, that's who should be doing that and then giving it to her for her brain to review. So, things like that, I think are, yeah, that low hanging fruit, we can definitely get some help with somebody doing that.
Bring that forth to us in the February timeframe and we'll talk about whether, how expeditiously you can hire somebody. That is not an easy process, that is not gonna probably be, okay, we'll hire him in March, now I don't see that happening.
We, we don't exactly expect it to happen like overnight, but.
This doesn't take the place of the RFPs for.
Mm-mm, no, for those other.
Services and everything else, like we still have to follow, you know, if they get it again, again and again, that's whatever, but there's a, there's a sunshine level of. Hey, we've got to bid this stuff out, just like we do the state court, just like, you know, these, these can't be backroom deals, these are one-year appointments, off we go, you know what I'm saying, like. Just for, I mean, I.
You have any comments?
You would expect a staff attorney to be able to have all this expertise in zoning or have.
Yeah.
All of this expertise and.
But he doesn't get our, like, he's our employee, you know what I'm saying, but he's, he's our employee, he's not a.
Okay, uh, now that we've kind of got an agreement on this, moving forward, as you think of things, get to Steve, we'll talk about, you know, individually, what the. Uh, job description and all of that stuff looks like, to make sure we're all covered in all of that stuff, and as soon as he can start to. Put something out on the street and then start talking about hiring, we'll talk about it, alright?
I, I also think that it, that it should, there's a lot of your work that you're doing. That can also be shoved down to, to that level, you know what I'm saying?
I'm the number one believer in that.
So, maybe not all the way up to another, you know, deputy county manager level, but like, there's a lot that you can offload onto a full-time.
Alright, everybody ready for tonight, any questions on tonight's issues?
I did have another question.
Was there anybody in our appointments that doesn't want to be reappointed that we've heard from?
Yes.
A few.
A few, and, and we're ready to. Alright.
How many names do I need to bring back, that's my.
We, I, the, the big book is here to be able to do some stuff with.
If we're reappointing, we don't have to put them back in the book, we just reappoint them.
They are back in the book.
If they're, if they're, okay.
Yes, okay, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some moves.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, any more discussion, all those in favor, please signify by raise your hand. Five, zero, we're adjourned.